No requests, items may be removed from this section and placed in the regular order of business following the approval of the consent agenda. Nothing's on the paper there? Alright, can I get a motion?
How much paper?
Okay, five seconds. Alright, so we will call.
Yes, Mr. Bexton?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Prophet?
Yes.
And Ms. Bexton?
Alright. Communication board. This push on me is set aside for the purpose of allowing an opportunity for individuals to address the board regarding matters not on the agenda. The board is not allowed to take action on any item which is not on the agenda except as authorized by government code section 54954.2. Request forms for this purpose are located at the entrance of the board meeting. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk prior to the start of the meeting. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. We have two written comments that I would hand out. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. They were already pulled. Sorry about that. Alright, so since we've started the meeting, we're not gonna accept any more yellow sheets, so you got thirty seconds to get in there. Okay.
So these items not on the agenda, is that what you were speaking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, you still got fifteen seconds, you can fill it through. Because I am horrible at reading these and you don't want to make words dirty, because it's almost comical to read one. Okay, so we have, so we're limited to twenty minutes per item, we have eight. So everyone will have two and a half minutes instead of three.
For the landing spot topic.
Topic home. We'll give them, we need a minute to adjust our time.
We'll get down to and a half minutes.
And so just to get you ready.
Forty-five seconds, yeah.
No, thirty, thirty seconds?
We normally do it at...
Forty-five seconds.
You normally do it at a minute, don't you? So they get their little warning at forty-five seconds, I think, right? Right, so two and a half minutes would be forty-five seconds.
Or so. Forty-five seconds. Forty-five seconds.
Forty-five second warning.
Alright, so Chrissy, you're first, and Melissa, you are on deck. Are we good to go, Melissa?
Okay, I would like to address the board regarding the landing spot on our school campuses. There's no question that mental health in kids is at a very scary place right now and many are suffering. The wellness centers can be used for many great things and I think we are seeing that happen. If kids are looking for counseling through their wellness center, some have been referred to Casey and the Landing Spot. I have a thirteen-year-old son that I'm grateful, talks to me when he needs help or guidance, and I'm pretty sure most of the parents that are here showing up for their kids daily have a relationship where their kids can trust them and talk to them. But what about the kids who don't have parents showing up for them? The low-hanging fruit, as Casey called it. They probably do need help and guidance from appropriate and qualified adults. We can't blindly send them to someone who is encouraging kids to lie to their parents and lie about what's happening during these gatherings. We know that's what's happening because we heard Casey say it on the video, no matter the claims, it was edited, we heard that. How does that help a student in need of help establish healthy, trusting relationships when they're told to be dishonest about it? Asking kids to keep secrets is bad and quite honestly creepy. I am requesting that the Landing Spot never be associated with our district. People are free to do whatever they want in their personal time and I encourage families to do what works best for them, but to have our public school district working directly with that organization is unacceptable. I look forward to hearing the outcome of the investigation and hope the board and district keep transparency with everything surrounding this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. Melissa, and then on deck, Jennifer Duncan.
I am here to speak about the Landing Spot potentially being allowed back on our campuses. We've heard adults vouch for him and we've heard from students whose parents vouched for him. It's great that those parents are involved and taking an active approach. Casey Tinnan specifically states targeting the low-hanging fruit, the kids whose parents are not present, not around, or not supportive. Then who is protecting them? They are the most vulnerable and statistically speaking, the most prone to abuse. There are steps in place to protect students and those weren't taken. I have heard Tinnan's response, but I have yet to hear him explain his statements. Instead, he deflects and continues to try to tear down Project Veritas or anyone who doesn't agree with him. And speaking of deflection, this isn't an attack on the LGBTQ community. This is a concern for the children stemming from common sense. For those supporting him, I ask that you please explain what he actually meant instead of just repeating that it was highly edited. If a student can't find a safe space in their home or with their family, with their friends, or at school, with a counselor, or at a wellness center with licensed therapists, then maybe that child needs a higher level of individualized care. Can you honestly say that the next best person to hand them off to is this man? Children need support, not value imposition. These children are individuals with a unique story to tell. People who work in the helping professions such as social work, counseling, psychology, and so forth, have to take extra care to avoid imposing their values on their clients. This push is a violation of boundaries and can interfere with treatment progress as well as their right to self-determination. When you decide to start keeping things from parents, the responsibility of protecting the children falls on you. How serious are you taking this? It wasn't long ago the district claimed they were fearful of being sued if an unmasked child caused a COVID death. Do you not see a liability here? You claim there has been no reports of any harm coming from anyone in contact with him. I am relieved to hear that, but I'm also not ignorant to the fact that abused persons, especially children, are usually open about abuse. The average age for reporting child sex abuse is age fifty-two. If you can't recognize the concern with this man and his highly edited interview, I suggest you listen to the entire recording. If you still fail to recognize the red flags, I may have to question your intent. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, and Mike, you are on deck.
I'm here to speak about the Landing Spot as well. I'm not gonna go over the details, I can get all the facts, but I just want to talk about some of the statements that were troublesome for me. Mr. Tinnan said to lie to your parents. He said, "Call CPS if you don't agree with what your parents are doing with you," as far as like Brown House, for example. He encouraged experimentation in minor sexual relations. He encouraged the use of pornography. And he again, as we heard, made references to low-hanging fruit, whatever that means. And let's not forget, he is not a trained doctor, he is not a child psychologist. So now there's some other facts that I want to just point to, out to you today. So under California Penal Code 273D, it states the purpose of child abuse laws to protect minors from behaviors that may be damaging to their well-being. This means an action must be taken to cause damage. That damage is defined as a willful infliction in a situation which a person, knowing the causes or allows a child to suffer or goes through emotional, physical, or sexual pain. So the laws from that Penal Code, also 11164 to 11174.3, then further defines five types of child abuse. I'm just gonna focus on one, that's psychological abuse. Unlike physical abuse, psychological abuse has no visible signs, it affects a person's mental state. In children, psychological abuse refers to when a caregiver or adult exposes a minor to behavior that may negatively affect a child's mental state. So now let's talk about child endangerment. Under Penal Code 273A, child endangerment is a criminal offense under circumstances or conditions likely to produce great bodily harm or death, willfully caused or permits any child to suffer or inflict upon unjustifiable physical pain or mental suffering. Now this is the most important part. It is also a crime for someone who has care or custody of a child, which would be you, to permit the child to be placed in a dangerous situation even if the child does not suffer a physical injury. The penalty under those two laws that I just talked about is either misdemeanor or criminal felony. So I just would ask yourself, and you've heard it before, please use common sense. Apply these laws that I just explained to you to what you see before you. And let's get on up and educate our children, as Mr. Joe often always tells us every meeting. And let's leave the social and the sexual lives of youth up to their parents first and foremost, in conjunction with their child.
Mike, you're up, and Wendy, you are on deck.
Before I start, can you guys fix the mic, it's too light, it's like echoing back there.
And Mike, feel free to lift the mic up a little bit too, if you want to. Am I echoing, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Am I echoing?
Yes. It's not this, it's...
It's the doctor. Okay. Mic's bad? Turn it all down, hopefully that helps. Alright, is that better?
There you go.
Can everyone hear my mic? So you have the...
This mic might be too low. Down?
Yeah.
There you go.
You're supposed to say, "check, check."
No. Good evening, Madam President, Board members. I didn't think that I would be here speaking tonight. It had been a fate that the superintendent and district office would comply with my Public Records Act and that there'd be nothing to discuss this evening. Unfortunately, they don't want to be as transparent as the superintendent said they would be a few meetings back. What I received regarding the Landing Spot is, once again, bringing to light the push for this agenda to be on our campuses. Requested were background checks of all Landing Spot representatives entering onto the campus. I got zero. That tells me no checks were done, that's a major red flag for us parents. Per emails, between LHS principal Jen Halludon, William Jodry, Julian Cantler, Estes, and Casey Tinnan, he was allowed to sign in and walk to room fifteen alone and with no staff person in the room. They walked the campus at lunchtime with all students present outside. It's completely negligent. Emails were redacted where they should not be. Example was an email from Jen Halludon about Mr. Hutchinson to Casey Tinnan. A text message from Jen Halludon to Casey Tinnan was not given in full. Why was the Assistant Superintendent of Gems Jessica Fernandez blind copied on an email from PFLAG of a flyer for the drag show? Was she speaking to her eleven, twelve, or thirteen-year-old students about this? They operated with no M U, just a phone call from Jen Halludon to the Roseville District and she got a "they are great" and gave the Landing Spot the green light. How much more is being hidden, as is obvious, we did not get all the documents and communication between the district and the Landing Spot. So much for transparency. While I understand the desperate need for mental health care in our schools, having any type of political, religious, or woke agenda counselors are not needed no matter what side it may be on. We need a licensed healthcare professional to get these children better. The government, the state, and the district did enough damage masking our kids and keeping them off campus. Let's not make a similar mistake by not getting all children proper help. They want their agenda or nothing. Frankly, nobody cares if you are trans, gay, whatever. We are tired of having it shoved in our faces everywhere we look. The trans community is demanding we teach our children to celebrate and participate in a radical agenda. And they want you to think we are the intolerant ones. So Board members, please do not allow them back under any circumstance.
Okay, Wendy, you're up, and Chris Baldwin, you're on deck.
Good evening. I just want to thank this board for removing the Landing Spot. It's come to my attention that there are individuals in this community that have said some disparaging comments about other members of the community. And I want to first off tell Marjorie that we are just grateful for you and I know that there's been some really awful things that have been said about you. And we're thankful of everything that you have done for our children. All of the board up here is really... Thank you, George, thank you, Chrissy, and thank you, April. So with the disparaging comments, it's really discouraging because I really do think that there are two sides, but I think that we have a lot more in common than we do, than we know. And I think that coming together is really what we need to do for our kids. Instead of calling people's specific names out and slandering people on social media, which could create defamation of character, I think that we need to come together. I want to first off say that we are with an organization called Moms for Liberty, you all know that. I want to share an excerpt of that because we are joyful warriors. You all know, I have been here many times over the last almost three years. I have always had decorum, I have never cussed any of you out, I have never yelled at any of you. We don't do that. We don't talk about, bad about people and what they, what their genders or their sexuality or anything of that. As a matter of fact, why are we talking about sexuality and gender in school? I don't understand that. Like, this is school, we should be talking about math, we look at science. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be talking about sexuality. And to continue to encourage these children to do that, it's just, it's mind-blowing to me, I don't understand it. No one cared about drag shows until the children were pulled in. No one cared about what people did behind closed doors and sexuality until they started pulling the children in. That's a huge issue. There's lots of red flags. I'm actually gonna email what Tiffany had said. Because it's long, it's six minutes, I was gonna share just three minutes here. But I'm gonna share with you what Moms for Liberty actually is about. She spoke at a congressional hearing and she was amazing, so I'll email it to you. Thank you.
Chris? Chris, you are up.
Alright.
And Alicia, you are on, Alicia, Alicia, you are on deck.
See if I can sneak this in in two minutes and thirty seconds.
Yep.
Hi, everybody, I'm Chris Baldwin. I live in Sheridan, I have one student who will be graduating this year from Lincoln High School. I just wanted to kind of start off by saying that I know some of you on the board have been hanging out at the board meetings for the last year and a half, two years. And I want everybody to know, I wanted everybody to know, that I believe that everybody on this board and everybody in this room wants the best for the kids in this district. They want them to get the support they need, the resources they need. And the help that they need, especially the mental health, help that they need. That said, this is school, it's a government entity, it's never gonna be perfect. It's never gonna be perfect. You know, from that standpoint, but there are resources, there are resources for these kids. And as it pertains to the Landing Spot, I'm hoping we can keep them off campus. So we could go back and forth and argue many times, I think, about what this pastor is, what he's not, what he said, what Project Veritas is. But the two things that are irrefutable, as I re-watch the video, is, one, he asks kids to tell lies and keep secrets. And two, he's counseling kids on medical procedures and medicines without a parent available. And I have a problem with that, just like I have a problem with a police officer questioning my kid without a lawyer or a parent available. Or a coach saying, you know, if you take these steroids, you'll get bigger and faster and stronger and be better. I wonder what would happen, what the LGBTQ community would say if it were a counselor saying, "Oh, you should take these medicines and they're, they're, they haven't been tested yet, but they'll make you straight." Or, "You should go back to, you know, sexual re-education camp," on that side. So, you know, I think a lot of things would happen. I don't want to discount, you know, kids from this community and what they might face at home. But to me, it's a lot like when I was a kid, right? A young girl who got pregnant, a teenage girl, or a boy who got his girlfriend or a girl pregnant, right? "Oh, my parents are gonna kill me." No, that's exactly when you most need to go back to your parents for, you know, counseling from them. And granted, I know that there are some places where violence and...
Thank you, Chris. Got to hear it, everyone. That was unkindly, Chris, 'cause you know where I live.
Yeah.
Okay, Alicia, you're up. Oh my gosh, am I supposed to read this name?
Okay, go on.
Lopkins? No, not yours. What person, you go to the other side?
The gentleman who went last.
Oh, Matt?
Yeah.
This isn't a for me.
Alright, I'm sorry. Hello, board, thank you for this time. We are at a crossroads. Do we allow people with narrow-minded beliefs to take our children down a path of draconian values? Or do we fight so all children are represented, supported, and provided with a safe space? Florida's plague of hate is spreading through groups like Moms for Liberty. Last I checked, liberty had nothing to do with banning books or risking children's lives. Wendy Beal, the leader of the local Moms for Liberty chapter, claims to care about children, yet she shows actual love for abuse enablers like Jim Jordan. Disinformation is deadly. People have asked that the books of hate you give be banned because it's anti-police, that is a lie. People have asked that the Landing Spot be banned from campus because of predators being given keys to locked rooms where they are left alone with children, that is a lie. What is not a lie is that the same people trying to ban books and dehumanize the LGBTQIA+ community are on the same side of this debate as actual Nazis. Denying children representation in curriculums and not preparing them for the future only sets them up for unnecessary pain and struggles. Allowing people with actual oppressive agendas to claim that equity, SEL, science, and history are controversial or harmful are akin to the fascism and communism that nearly destroyed entire nations. Throughout history, we have seen how dishonesty and inhumanity caused human suffering on equal proportions. So when grandstanding wannabe politicians like Matthew Oliver lie to attack the LGBTQIA+ community and elected officials like Holly Andriata support those lies while befriending actual sexual abuse enablers like Jim Jordan, you can see a familiar pattern begin to emerge. We must learn from history. When I attended the last board meeting here, I listened carefully to the comments that were made. When I heard a straight white man get up twice to comment on how it wasn't necessary to have the Landing Spot work for youth and that having an ethnic studies course just promoted divisiveness, I couldn't help but laugh to myself at how ridiculous that level of gatekeeping and gaslighting truly was. If you want to know what our youth need, please ask them, listen to them, hear them. And if you want to talk about misinformation and slander, ask why Matthew Oliver felt free to call Casey Tinnan, an innocent man, a pedophile on multiple occasions. I guarantee you, his lawyers are looking into that. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Matthew Oliver. I actually want to take a moment to say thank you to this board for allowing us to share, which a lot of boards have been noted to cut everybody off, so thank you for that and thank you for letting me squeak in. I also want to say thank you for your bold stance in regards to the Landing Spot and Casey Tinnan. The Landing Spot and Casey Tinnan, who was on our schools, is a pervert and he should never be allowed on our school campuses again. He encouraged children, teens, boys and girls, to watch pornography. That's true. He taught his own version of sex ed, encouraging children to masturbate. That's true. He encouraged children to lie to their parents, experiment sexually. He stated that he looked for low-hanging fruit. I would like to ask this school board to agree that Casey Tinnan should never be allowed on any of our school campuses. If a white, straight, girl swim team coach encouraged those girls to go home and watch pornography and masturbate, he would be banned for life. Why then would we give Casey Tinnan a pass? This has nothing to do with LGBTQ plus situations, this has nothing to do with supporting our children. This has to do with perversion, this has to do with a demented mindset. Anyone who defends Casey Tinnan is perverted and in his inappropriate actions is equally demented. Any educator who defends Casey Tinnan should immediately be removed. This board needs to make an official decision that Casey Tinnan and his Landing Spot and their perverted and immoral mindsets should not be allowed to prey on our school campuses any further. Thank you.
Okay, so while we, I think we need to reset back to three minutes.
I need to get going.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going back to three minutes. Unless you only want two and a half.
I need like thirty seconds.
Is this for a different topic?
This is the same topic.
Did you give us a sheet?
I did.
He turned in his sheet right before I turned in mine, I can vouch for that.
I didn't...
What's your name?
Oh.
It just says PRA. So sorry. Public Records Act.
Like one minute left?
You got thirty, you said thirty seconds.
Alright, well, thank you. Just wanted to be real quick with this. I received the PRA on this issue that we're talking about from somebody. I see some defects in it. On page twenty-five, there's an entire sentence that is blacked out, redacted. I don't really understand why this entire sentence would be redacted. I understand redacting some words, some specific things, redacting an entire sentence, especially in something that is sent from an employee to a member of the public. Seems kind of unacceptable because there should not be something that is confidential to this level being sent to a public member in the first place. And then on the very last page, I just wanted to mention that the text message thread that is on there, the last text has a view all at the very bottom of it. That means you have to click it and see the rest of the text message. This is very clearly not showing the entire text message that is on there. I would suggest reopening this back up or having a third party look at it and make sure that the text message is on there and that that email was not wrongfully redacted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me, I'm a member of the community, I didn't realize you had to sign up. Could I have thirty seconds? I've been here a long time.
Are you okay?
I'm not gonna say anything bad.
Is this on the Landing Spot?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Afterwards, I'll need you to fill out.
Yeah, I didn't know, I knew nothing, I just was notified. And my name is Jeffrey Billman. Been living in Placer County since, I don't know, early two thousands, like, probably early nineteen nineties. My children went to school through here. I just saw that video, wasn't paying attention, like most people don't. But I also, like most people, have children who now have children. And I served my country in the military a long time ago. Didn't do anything great, didn't do anything great at all, but I just did those things. But I was looking at that video and listening and reading these articles and wondered, why don't more people go? I'm missing dinner with my wife, I got my only day off, these kind of things, right? And you guys dedicate all your evenings, I can't believe it. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for taking the time to make a common sense choice to take a person who is obviously and clearly grooming children, no matter what your political ideology is. It's one thing to know for sure, if you've got to keep something secret from people, from the public, from citizens, from parents, then there's something wrong with what you're trying to show. If the light of the day makes you scurry away, then it's probably not a good idea. And I was also reading, and I didn't get time to check, but is that person in that group cleared by the state to be a counselor? Because if they are, then that's one thing, but if they're not, how is a school, anybody at a school, without a parent's notice, right, sending their kids there? I don't know, but I think that that's probably pretty important. And it's also important to know that the more this goes on, the more this nonsense is promoted, right? Like the other lady said, it's okay to do whatever you want with whomever you want, but not with children and not hiding and not taking our money to do nonsense, not educating. My mother was an educator, my sister's an educator, her daughter's an educator. A lot of people are educators. You guys do a heck of a job, they do a heck of a job. They have a lot of challenges. But this is not something that is, is good for children. It's not, just stick to the, stay in your lane, right? Stay in your lane. Don't send my kids or my grandkids out to somebody because during puberty, they thought that they might have been a girl. Because when they're four or five, they didn't think that when they were Superman or wanted to be Batman or Popeye or whatever the heck they are now. It didn't make me send them off to a therapist or do something because I didn't change the whole room. You know, I didn't have time to prepare, I'm not a great public speaker, but keep in mind that there are, there are many, many, many people that agree with what these folks were saying. Thank you.
So remember to, what's your name?
Jeffrey Billman.
Jeffrey, thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you. Remember to fill out...
Remember to fill out a form. And so we have heard this now and address the board and staff. We have heard this topic now for three meetings. I want to know if the board agrees with directing Carrie's staff to ensure that we, number one, first of all, I want to commend the wellness center that we have. It is awesome. I know also there was some talk of getting the founder in. So we, so one of the items would to ask Carrie and company to keep pursuing that as a replacement for the landing spot to ensure that we don't have Casey Tinnan on any of our campuses ever again.
I do agree a hundred percent, but I want to make sure we have a licensed therapist or counselor for those kids. And we, that is extremely, but we're not, we don't want to leave any kid behind. But I don't think Casey and Landing Spot is the right for our.
And we know that the proper vetting will happen for that. We know that. Okay, all right. I just wanted to bring that to rest during this meeting. You're killing children. Okay, next will be Elena, present. And on deck will be Heather Oden.
Can you guys hear me? Does it go down? Yeah, I feel like I'm going to break it. Okay, so, hi. Gosh, I feel like we're all going to be best friends pretty soon. I'm here all the time now. Okay. At the last meeting, curriculum was brought up, specifically adding a course focusing on the Constitution. I was a little alarmed that the board didn't know that the Constitution was covered in many different grade levels. Fifth grade does an entire social studies unit on it, which is, you know, the founding of the US. Eighth grade has US history. Eleventh grade has US history. Twelfth grade has government and economics and AP has, AP Gov has the Constitution and that. So I just started regularly attending the board meetings and you guys are always talking about ideas. A lot of these ideas are already in place. They're already being done. What I'm not seeing provided is data. I hear reports from the district office, but I'm not seeing discussion from the boards about what's already being provided. I've not seen an understanding of what the district goals are, what the students want, what the students need, the climate of the schools, and what the curriculum is already being taught. There's plenty of resources available, many online trainings on how to be a proactive, productive member of the board that represents all of the students equally. I actually just attended a training on, you know, why school boards are important because honestly, this is something I'm just learning. I've only been attending since, I don't know, this is like my, I don't remember, but just for a few months. And school boards are important and I'm learning. And I've had kids that were here for the last twenty, fifteen years. So there's a book that was recommended to me at this training that I just took yesterday. And it's called Right on Their Behalf. And it was written by this guy who is a national school board governance leader. And I think it's important, I'll share the information, but school boards do matter, but being aware of what's already going on and what's already being offered to your students is important too. Thank you.
Heather, you're up and Ann, well, you're on deck.
Hello, my name's Heather. Well, Jason is obviously not here and I did want to thank him publicly for showing my child that came to a couple of the board meetings what's going on here, what decisions are being made for her education and for showing a very clear and biased way of conducting himself up here. It was really positive for her and he really wanted to include a lot of the students' input on any decisions being made about them. On another note, I am speaking for myself as a mom, to be clear, and for my child that wasn't here. She's not here today. In response to the board members' replies from last meeting, my daughter spoke to the board about TBMS not teaching the mandated Sexual Health and HIV Prevention Education Unit. While it was nice for a board member to reach out to her, I have to tell you it was done improperly. She's a minor, we all know that. I put my phone number and email address for correspondence. She was uncomfortable with being asked to call the member back on the member's personal cellphone and set up a meeting with just herself and the board member. Not once was a parent mentioned in being part of the call or the meeting. This is hypocritical. Please coordinate that with me as her mom and her, but me. She's going into high school next year and her whole eighth grade class was not taught this unit. In further investigation, I have spoken to multiple parents of students at JEMs who have also verified that their students have not taken this unit. Multiple high school students did not take this in middle school as well. This is unacceptable. Why does it feel intentional? It's weird. On the topic of the non-existing wellness centers at TBMS and TBHS, I have spoken to the vice principal of TBMS. And they have the space in the room all set up for a wellness center, but no resources to run it? She said they've been begging for more resources from the district and the board for another counselor or provider to help them out. One counselor for eight hundred students is unproductive. The students I know and my daughter knows, they need help and they need to get an ASO. It's very serious what I'm hearing. And it kills me. I report it, but just please explore what is needed to get this going. And I'm just doing the agenda. I'm just talking in a broad sense, not one topic of mental health. It is horrible what I hear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Calhoun, would you like to reach out to Heather to give her information?
Yeah.
On the evening that we have. Heather, Carrie will, Carrie and company will reach out to you to talk more about the.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, Ann, and Gus. Oh, there you are. You were behind, no, you're on deck.
Hi, my name's Ann. I have a daughter in the district. She's been in the district since kindergarten and I just want to say I have loved every administrator, every teacher we've come into contact with. I trust our teachers. I trust our administrators. At the last board meeting on the eighteenth, some questions and comments after the presentation on ethnic studies were concerning to me. The emphasis that was continually put on local history just concerned me. I felt like it was out of touch. I felt like it showed a lack of understanding in terms of what ethnic studies are. My understanding was the locally developed curriculum would be locally developed. It's not, you know, the history of Lincoln. Partnering with John Adams because they have great people in history that they celebrate in their curriculum. It is okay for us to study the not-so-great people in history as well. And I think that that is vitally important. I find it disingenuous to be concerned about ethnic studies because someone like Mao might be celebrated in our schools. I trust our teachers. I trust that that's not going to happen. The comment that we need to be very careful about who we decide to make great leaders in different ethnicities, we need to make sure they are, they were truly great people. That is true of anybody that we study of history and is not just true when we're talking about ethnic sense. There were several other comments that I just felt were out of touch. I'm not going to go over all of them. You know, I will say one of them. There was a comment about some countries selling their own people into slavery. I, why are we asking that question? I really mean that. It's not throwing accusations. What value is added there? Is there subtext? It just really seems like there's a lack of understanding in terms of what ethnic studies are. One other thing is that there was mention of maybe hiring a consultant to develop this curriculum. I don't know enough about that process. I don't know the ins and outs of that. Is that a standard practice? Don't we have professionals that do things like that? And I would also hope that there is a lot of transparency in terms of who we are hiring to develop that curriculum and what we're paying for it and if it's needed. I honestly don't know and that's something, like others have said, I've just started getting involved and paying attention and I'm going to keep doing so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gus, you are up and Jamie, you are on deck.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gus Murphy. I have two children in the district. I don't want to talk about the landing spot. What I do want to talk about is what I found to be the most important two topics to all districts in Placer County, and that's votes and money. That's a currency that most elected officials in districts understand pretty well. I believe parent choice is important. I really like the idea of school choice. I do believe that in Placer County, if most parents had their choice, they would probably pick an alternative to California public education. But they can't because they're too busy working, trying to afford a living here, so they drop their kids off to you alone with their tax money. And we trust that the right thing will be done. Somewhere along the way, the California Department of Education and the California Teachers Association self-appointed themselves as moral authority, in my opinion. And I can't compete with the hundreds of millions of dollars of those entities or the schools insurance group where all districts pool their money together over at SIG with surety bonds. A friend of mine, three years ago, told me, she said, Gus, and they know who they are if they're watching tonight, she said, Gus, the parents need a seat at the table. And I've always agreed and I've never really known how to give the parents a seat at the table until now. I am working very hard with a core group of parents with one goal in mind. And that is to finally, I'm not an Elon fanboy, but thanks to his platform Twitter, we can finally get out from underneath being called disinformation. And I plan on reaching out to thousands and thousands of parents in Placer County. I am going to do that. And I'm going to connect them with the right entities that are going to raise funds to sharpen the other edge of the sword, figuratively speaking, to litigate against any district who violates the constitutional rights of families. And I am going to teach them how to put in Freedom of Information Act requests to get curriculum so they can pull their children, hurt that district's ADA, and teach them how not to be truant while doing it. I plan on helping them turn a spotlight on SARC in the curriculum so that we can truly see where the grades lie in this district. The biggest hurdle for parents in the past few years has been exposure and organization. And I plan on at least putting a Band-Aid on it, if not completely fixing that problem. I'm going to take the people who don't have the time to be here, but have the few dollars to put to the cause, and then I'm going to put them with the right lawyers and the right organizations so that finally we can speak a language you understand. And that's going to be litigation, money, ADA. I'm no longer focusing on one issue. I'm actually going to work my tail off with other parents to make sure that whenever you, for example, bring Casey Tinnan or something like that, you're going to be looking over your shoulder because we're going to sue and we're going to come after you and it's going to hurt. So you have to think twice. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus.
Hi, guys. All right, so I just wanted to bring some stats for our track shooting. We just had our series shoot number four. We're going to have one this Saturday, so it's me, great. We do have some, we did have a podium. Our varsity took third place, Alex Wisdom. Fifth place is Julian Hernandez. And right now, our varsity team is currently in third place in our division. Our JV, we've been doing better, they took third place, Ethan Hawes.
Hawes.
Hawes. And fifth place is Connor West. And we are in first place. There are teams that come out like Deloro and a few others that they are practicing. Their practices are daily. We come out once a week and like half the team on Thursdays that can. This is the, they're busy. But to pull these numbers that they're pulling and do as little as they do, I mean, they're, they are very talented. They're amazing students. So I just wonder.
Jamie, where's their track meeting on Saturday?
Sac Valley.
Ooh.
Yes, it is close. It is close. And actually, this, this one, this Saturday, and then the one, two Saturdays is the same place.
They need to go watch how they pull Sac Valley. I heard they're a really hard course.
It is very.
I am.
But yeah. I forget.
Yeah, that's right.
But yeah, that was actually a really, a harder one for us because when they say cool, so the student will say cool and the microphone picks it up and automatically does it. At this place, when the only place that does it, you are at the mercy of the person that's sitting behind you pressing a button. So it is a lot harder for them. So, yeah.
Yes, well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for ending us on a really fun, positive note. Appreciate that. All right. All right, so reports, student advisory.
You're all around. I'm all around. Is it on? Okay, so. Yeah. Want to stop? Okay, so hi, I'm Clara. I'm the speaker, I'm presenting at the Colored Bridges. Okay, so we had junior proms. It was pretty fun. Everyone seemed to have a really good time. I attended the student summit in Moro Bay with Carrie and some of the other members. I'm sure she'll touch on this later. Mamma Mia performances begin this Thursday for Colored Bridges. Our leadership class is continuing to meet with our admin team to work on facilitating a stronger relationship between admin and students in light concerns. ASB and class officer positions are now open. We're going to have an election. Our track team's doing amazingly right now. They had a meet today and they're doing a fundraiser at Left of East right now. AP tests are upcoming this week and tensions are pretty high. The junior class in particular is crazy right now. But on that note, I'm going to go home and study for AP.
Good luck in your class.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Okay, Board of Trustees, Member Dijkstra.
Ah, yes. I've been attending the dyslexia committee meetings and I have, proud to say, thank you. It's an exemplary committee, it really is. I've been in a lot of committees and this is a great one. A large part of that is due to the great leadership of Scott Pickett. And he's played in the committee in a superb way. What we're currently doing is trying to polish earlier testing procedures that incorporate all the best practices in the different schools. We may have good practices in one school and the other schools are a little weaker. So through communication, we're going to come up and bring everybody up and have the best testing practices and teaching practices. Dyslexia, it is truly a great committee. I'm very proud to be on it. I also had the chance to go to the Youth Development Network for the first time, which is what you hear YDM. And they had an excellent meeting too. As any parent. As any parent can tell you, one of the hardest things a parent can do is communicate with their kids. YDM is attempting to improve on that and they respect the students, the parents, and the teachers. And in my one-day exposure to it, I think they actually might do something good. So I'm looking forward to seeing how they, how it comes out. Carrie's there all the time and I hope it's going to be a great committee. School finances. I've been and will continue to be working on school finances, which will allow us to improve and build schools for Lincoln's growing number of students. It's something that we really can't ignore and it's fundamental to us, not having kids meeting in parking lots and not having a classroom or something like that. We have to have it. The community's growing and very shortly, we won't have enough space for our kids. And that's something we can't allow to happen. I went to the Scott Lehman Open House, which was terrific. It's usually the best part of my week when I get to see the little ones. You see their art projects, their, they sing a song. They do all sorts of great things that little kids can do and only they can do, of course. And I've asked myself why I like seeing that so much. And it's mainly because you show, you see little kids and you see, you see genuine enthusiasm. There's no pretense and, and they, when they, their arms are open wide in hope. And it's just, it's really invigorating to see that and it's a real treat. If you get a chance to go to one of those open houses, corny as it is, it's just a wonderful experience. I really treasure it. And finally, and the most important thing I'm going to talk about, is we have, here in Lincoln, in California, United States, we have a world's champion. What do you say? A world's champion? Yes, we do. Marjorie Prophet and her daughter Nina won the national championship. They were down in Disney World and against all sorts of competition. It's on the internet if you want to look at it and it's worth looking at. But world's champions, that is pretty cool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, no, you can go on, bud.
All right. Marjorie Prophet. Okay, so he stole my thunder for the dyslexia thing, too, because I was going to do a great shout-out to Mr. Scott Pickett, who has put in a lot of time and energy on this. Education is my passion for my time on this board, that we become number one. And I really think, once we get the ball going here, we're going to improve our, our numbers as far as literacy. This will make a significant difference. So I want to thank you and the staff and the parents still taking on this. It's not a month, not a month or every other month. We're meeting several times a week to make this happen, so, and trying to get the teachers on board, who most, I think, are. So I'm pretty excited about what's going to happen by next school year with it. And I think we're going to see a vast improvement in our district over the next several years. So thank you, Scott. I appreciate it. I've had three one-on-one sessions with Dan Hankinson for our Leadership Development. So we improved that last month or the month before. I'm really enjoying these sessions with him. He's, he's really great at leading me into how to answer my own questions and expressing my own thoughts in a more meticulous way with being thoughtful to others, which is something I really needed. So I enjoy him. I'm looking forward to when our entire team gets together and has our group meeting and we can all work together to develop a really great strategic plan to work together. Raging Rhino Silver Grad has a fundraiser on May 9th. Please come out to Sino's Pizza. We need all the help that we can get. It's our first year, next year, with the graduating class, so we need the whole community, everybody involved, to come out and eat. Don't cook dinner. We need your money. We haven't talked about it yet tonight. It's on our agenda, the math curriculum. I just want to say, I want to give some teacher love here for the math committee. I reviewed the math curriculum. I have a young child, I'm not, she's a teenager now, but I already was really difficult to navigate and I'm glad to see where we're replacing that with a more user-friendly application. I really like the Reveal program. It uses problem-solving strategies versus memorizing procedures. So if you've ever had to work with your child on this stuff, it's, I enjoyed it. It's more simplified, to just put it the easiest way. And the curriculum gradually increases, you know, instead of like one year, now, next week, we're on a new one. It's more methodical so that they're not jumping from one ideal to the next. So I really like that. And for those of you who have smarty-pant kids that are considering going into engineering, they are now adopting a new calculus curriculum, too, and I looked at it. I don't know calculus, no, but when I read the comparisons from what we currently have to what's coming new, all the teachers agreed that this would be much better for them. So I think that's really great. So I want to commend the teachers for taking on this one. It's a task, a pilot program, and they've all got to be retrained and it's a lot. So thank you for doing it and making lives easier, not just for the kids but for the parents, too, who have to sit and bear through the math with their kids. I appreciate that.
You mean enjoy the math.
I never had that enjoyment with my children. I'm jealous, so. And then, like George said, I spent a week in Florida with my daughter. She's on a world's charity team and 534 teams from around the world, she's number one. Their team won. Ms. Brady Incredible was on ESPN. She made March 11th. But I won because, you know, I did all that driving together.
I hope she says she's from Placer County and not Sacramento.
She's going to say Lincoln.
Okay.
But her team is not.
Good.
But there's another student in our district who is on her team. She's an eighth grader. So, but I don't want to use her name because it's not my business, too, but we do have two world champion athletes in our district. She's the youngest one on the team. So it's quite, quite, we're turning up some great athletes. I'm quite proud. I want to address the, we did talk about the parent, Mrs. Odell, Mrs. Odell, about the children not receiving their comprehensive sexual education, Mr. Pickett is going to reach out to. We'd already addressed that before coming in here. So I hope it does get solved. I had no idea that the kids weren't getting it, but now we know, so we hope that it's addressed. Also, I've never received one email from a parent, anybody in the district, asking for a wellness center needed to be at Colbrides High School or our Colbrides middle. Nobody's ever said that to me personally, but now that's on my radar. I'll look out for it or maybe, I don't know, this is a need that parents are saying, but for me, I don't know about the rest of the world. I've never heard anything of it, of it being needed, so.
I think that email did come in from you recently.
Recently. Yeah, but I had never heard of it up till now.
Up to that, okay.
So just so you know, I was not neglecting, I just hadn't heard that it was needed.
And I'm not saying it's, yeah.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I, as a board, have no, while I've been on this board, it's never been brought up by anybody that we needed at the other middle school and the high school. And I am visiting the middle school next week, so I've already made arrangements.
Thank you. That's all I really have.
Thank you.
My gosh.
I have very little.
You have Froyo. I have Froyo with Christie on accident on Saturday.
And your grandson.
And my grandson.
Okay, so I had my, I've had two, my meetings with James Warnick, Leadership Training Development. And I've got to tell you, he is absolutely amazing and amazing at pulling stuff out of you that you didn't, that you didn't want to share or you didn't know that you didn't want to share.
Well said.
Yeah, so his conversations, I call it my therapy session. I'm like, "Hey, you're back." I need my therapy session. So he's great. He's great. I really like him. And then last, the Friday before, I went to the Phoenix Prom, first time I've been back to prom in 34 years, so it was rather exciting. And Shelby, our board rep, looked absolutely amazing. Absolutely amazing. And it was just a lot of fun seeing the kids. This was their first-ever prom. So a lot of them didn't know, quite know what to expect. It was held at Women's Center downtown and the Women's, the Women's Club was there and they donated a lot, so they donated the hall, they donated some food for the kids. One of the kids had come up and said, "Is that food for us? Can we have some of that?" And it was like, you know, it was just an eye-opener. Of course you could. You could have had the whole pizza. Here you go. You know, and so it just, it was, it was great. I stayed there about an hour and a half and the kids were dancing, teachers were dancing with the kids. Christine McQuillan was out there, of course, dancing. And then Principal White Cotton, he was there and with his wife and they were out dancing with the kids. I think he was on the dance floor more than anybody else. So it was, it was a great, a great, they had a photographer there and stuff, you know, just like the high school proms. So it was very special. They had goodie bags they gave away.
Was this junior prom or senior or?
It was, well, it's a prom for Phoenix.
For everything.
For everything, yeah. And we, we had some great dressers. They had some really cute dresses. And that's all that. And then yesterday, I had a meeting with Aldo and Sherry from our Public Affairs Committee and that worked really well. And that's all.
Okay. On April 21st, George and I had an Academic Excellence Committee meeting with Scott, with Scott Pickett, Dick Knight, and I, so thank you for everything and thank you for allowing him to work with us so much. We had quite a bit of movement, I think, towards, you know, a committee, a work plan, so, and data gathering, data, and so I think it's going really well. So thank you for your time to stop on that. I also had two meetings with Dan from the Leadership Development, and he's given me homework. And so part of my homework is active and reflective listening, so I'll be practicing that with all of you. I heard you and you said tightly, so look for that. And then also, I'd like to do one-on-one meetings with each board member so we can talk, not about agenda items, just about how the best, how we can be the best board that we can. So I'll be setting those up over the next couple of months. Carrie and I have a one-on-one on, on Friday.
Thursday or Friday?
Friday, and then I, I had to postpone my meeting with Sherry because it's across town. So I'm going to have breakfast with you and coffee with her.
Perfect.
So, hold on, I don't drink coffee, but awesome. Anyways, and then, and then, side note, personal note, of my great permies has hobbies. Last week, we figured out she was pregnant about seven days before she gave birth. We thought, "She's just growing," so that was kind of fun. Because she's still young. So anyways, so it was, anyways, we have some peer-grade great permies now. Well, now, so, so that's just kind of a fun thing, a fun personal thing, so. Okay, that's all I have. So. So now we have Western Placer Personnel Association, Josh. Is anyone here for Josh? No? Okay. Western Placer Personnel Association, Gus. And Selena, and there's no record. Okay, and then we'll turn it over to Carrie.
Okay, so just a couple of things. Youth Development, day three, we had the day after our last board meeting. Because of just some scheduling conflicts for folks, we have, we're postponing our day four and, but we've met as a small, little leadership team today to talk about the fall listening circles that'll come out after the youth, the surveys, which we are going to be, as a board, I shared that information with you. And then we are going to be putting out to parents, like, here is the survey and here's when we're going to be administering it. And if you would like your student not to participate, here's how you let us know. So we will probably be, you know, with CAP testing and AP testing, we're just going to kind of wait and do it the last couple of weeks of school, as well as other organizations. So the other entities that are participating are actually giving these surveys to students. So in theory, some of our students could be taking these surveys more than once, representing the different organizations so that they have...
What other organizations?
So like if, if a student is actually receiving like probation services, perhaps, like in terms of just supports and opportunities within probation, supports and opportunities within parks and rec. So some, some of the entities are not going to be administering the surveys until like the summer. So some are parks and rec, like they have a plan to give the same survey where students can then, or the youth participating in that program can then fill it out as, as giving kind of feedback for parks and rec specifically. And then like the library is doing summer camps and so then they're going to administer the surveys as part of that and letting know, letting families and stuff know as well. And then we're obviously looking for feedback for our organization directly. So that's going to be coming up soon. I attended the Lincoln Leadership Session on Agro Tourism and we started our day at the farm. And the entire Lincoln Leadership Crew got to tour the farm and hear from our, our ag teachers and they, they just nailed it. It was absolutely amazing. It was the highlight of the day. And we saw Sea of Pacific, which was the coolest thing, too. Like, I got to tour it. Oh, it was amazing. And, and then we heard from some other entities throughout our, our Lincoln area and that was, it was great. And then we did our final, we did our dedication for Lincoln Leadership Project. So it was the three parks that we beautified and so we, we did an actual dedication on, I think it was the 20, it was the 22nd, Earth Day, on Saturday, the 22nd. And then this past Saturday, I helped set up for the Lincoln Wine Fest. I did not partake in the Lincoln Wine Fest, but I did help set up for it, 90 degrees weather as part of Rotary. So that was, that was nice and was sold out for like over a month. So great participation and raising a lot of money to come back to our schools, which is great. And then as Clara mentioned, so I took a team, which included Clara and Shelby last week and Reno Penders from, as I'm pointing this way, Reno, and principals from elementary, middle, and high school to San Luis Obispo to see their student senate. And they, it was awesome. They had over 100 students that come together. They write smart polls and they look at data and, and they share, you know, what are some themes or patterns of things that they would like to see changed in their, in their schools. And, and it was, it was phenomenal. And then their district senate goes back and serves on Congress. So they've set it up, kind of in similar alignment to our, our government, good or bad. But it's, you know, like, they, and so they have their senators and then they go back and they talk with Congress and Congress receives information that they then share out and then they also get input that comes back. So it's pretty, it's pretty great. We came up with some good ideas for how we might start to implement this in, in our district moving forward. And it will help us because with LCAP and requirements legally, student voice has to be a part of the LCAP development. And so this will just be a way for us to be able to ensure that they have a way to provide some feedback and input. And then everyone's kind of mentioned the leadership aspects and meeting with different, well, either James or Dan. We have a leadership retreat set, so it'll be basically a board study session day and we are going to be at the, in the library at going at our middle school. It's nicer, newer, it'll be a nice little place for us to, to hold our retreat. And that's going to be on the 15th, so it's after school kicks out. And it's a, I think we said nine to three. Yeah, so all day, we'll feed you. And that's it.
Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to note, every time you do your readout, that there are a lot of nights and weekends and just, I just really appreciate the time. I mean, this is not a 40-hour job for you. Is this even an eight-hour job for you, plus or minus an hour?
If you count the non-physical times that I'm at home doing work, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know. I just wanted to know that because I hear that every time you do a readout, so thank you. And I'm sure, and I know your team is on call during those times, too, and working overtime. We appreciate that. Okay, so, 7.1. Members of the public wishing to comment and any items should complete a yellow request to address the Board of Trustees, I'm sorry, complete a yellow request to address the Board of Trustees from a form located on the table at the entrance of the board room. Request forms are to be submitted to the board clerk before each item is discussed. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and the board will limit each time for the public input to 20 minutes. Now, do we have any? We don't have any. All right, so we will just move to 7.
I'm the only one who likes math.
I know. I was excited. I know. I was excited, huh? Okay. All right, so, plus you're on. This is approval of resolution twenty-two, two, two, five, two, five. Okay.
All right. We're doing something a little different this year. In the past, when we do employee appreciation, we usually do a little, little gift, little treat for staff. We haven't necessarily ever had the board do a resolution. A lot of districts do a resolution just where the board has an opportunity to express their appreciation for employees. May is kind of that time. In the state of California, the second Tuesday of the first full week of May is Teacher Day or Teacher Appreciation Day. So that's the next Tuesday of the ninth. That week is also recognized as Teacher Appreciation Week. And then the third full week in May, which would be the week of the twenty-first, is Classified Employees Appreciation Week. So we're kind of striking a deal right in the middle. So the week of the fourteenth through the twentieth is gonna be Employee Appreciation Week for our district.
So is that when we shower you all with love? Is that week, not on the?
I mean, you can do the ninth, you can do it. You can do it all, the whole month, it's fine.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll go ahead and read the resolution that I'm hoping to approve tonight. Uh, Western Plaster Unified School District Resolution Number Twenty-two slash twenty-two point twenty-five. Honoring the contribution of certificated and classified employees to quality education and declaring the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Employee Appreciation Week. Whereas California Education Code Section Three Seven Two 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 sets aside the second Wednesday in May as the day of the teacher and encourages suitable commemorative exercises directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. And whereas classified school employees provide valuable services to schools and students and contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment of the Western Plaster Unified School District. Whereas the governing board of the Western Plaster Unified School District has the utmost respect and admiration for certificated and classified employees who have dedicated their lives and talents to the education of our students who are truly our most precious and important resource. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the governing board of the Western Plaster Unified School District hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of the district's certificated and classified school employees to quality education in the state of California and in the Western Plaster Unified School District and declares the week of May fourteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as Employee Appreciation Week in the Western Plaster Unified School District. Passed and adopted this second day of May, twenty twenty-three, by the board trustees of the Western Plaster Unified School District by the following vote. So our recommendation obviously be for you to approve this resolution.
Any questions? Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, yeah. So I have a question.
Yeah.
And a comment. Now, I'm a math person, but I'm gonna stretch into English here. Is there a comma after twenty twenty-three on both in this area?
Probably should be, sure.
Okay, cause what, I have been a while since I've been in English classes. But when I write it, I write it with a, anyway, so there's two places that, just take a look at that. And then the second thing I would like to maybe recommend is that all of our signatures go on this, not just the president. All board signatures, all board member signatures go on this.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Something we can, I mean, you're, you're all welcome to sign it.
I can there too.
But yeah, we. Yeah, but I, I just think, I mean, I'll, I'll ask the board, would you like to sign this?
I'd like to sign it.
Kristi? Okay, could we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that makes it more meaningful to me anyways. That's it. And thank you for doing this.
We were thinking about this. We, we've actually had talk about, Kristi and I had talked about, okay, what day is it? Okay, it's this week. No, it's next week. We were, we didn't say the fourteenth, it was the twentieth. Did we?
No, I was just gonna, I was gonna do it the night.
I was gonna do it this week, this right, so we'll, whole, whole month is perfectly fine.
Whole, whole month is perfectly fine.
Okay, so, okay, so we.
Make a motion to pass it, right?
Yeah, make a motion to approve this.
I motion to approve.
By second.
Okay.
Oh, it's a little complicated. Mr. Lexstra?
Yes.
Ms. Freyben?
Yes.
Ms. Propple?
Yes.
And Ms. Nissin?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
All right, while, while I'm here, just gonna put a plug in. In the past, we honored our retirees at a, at a board meeting. This year, we're doing something a little different. So on Wednesday, May tenth, from five to six thirty, five to seven, at Twelve Bridges High School cafeteria area, we're gonna be honoring our retirees. We have twenty-one as of right now. We added one the other day. Twenty-one retirees. And we also have nine employees of the year, two certificated and seven classified that we're gonna be honoring as well. So we're kind of doing, trying something new, doing a, doing a little bit rather than just kind of a short little thing here. So you're obviously invited to come, so, May tenth, five, five PM, Twelve Bridges High School cafeteria.
Plus can send you an invite?
I can send you the invite.
Are you doing it in the cafeteria?
I guess Maria did.
Yeah, make sure.
We did, and it's my twenty-first birthday I can.
Twenty-first.
My birthday may or may not be my twenty-first.
She is, oh, she's all that math again. We're setting, you do the twenty-seven year old daughter, so, but anyways, thank you.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for that.
Love to see you there, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, math curriculum adoption. Scott, thank you.
So accepting the presentation tonight for the math adoption is gonna be Reno Penders, Lori Fury and Genie Actonson. So they're gonna take you through it and I'm gonna turn it over to them and they can give you all the info you need to know. They did all the work, so.
Thank you. Thank you for having my math teachers here because I was really excited. This is exciting for me.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here. And I kind of echo what you said, Marjorie. The teachers do put in a ton of time to do a pilot and we did it across the whole spectrum. And it's, it's a lot of days, a lot of work, a lot of commitment. And they really did an outstanding job and spent a lot of time and took it really seriously. And I think the product we picked put really well, so.
I liked it.
All right.
Sure.
So I just kind of wanted to start with this, the overall pilot process, just for transparency to kind of how we went through it. And we started this by gathering just programs that we could choose from. There's a ton of math programs. And within that, we use something called EdReports, which is an independent ranking system and they go through and they write programs. That kind of narrowed our focus down based upon the needs of the district. From there then, we critically looked at, a team of us looked at the programs that were rated high through Ed Reports and we kind of narrowed that focus down even, even more. We did this because in past adoptions, the teachers struggled to come to that conclusion before they even got to the program. So we tried to narrow where, where we could go. From there, we met with the teachers and we talked about the different programs that were available. And they came up with the criteria that they were looking for, that they, they thought would be best for kids and best for learning. From there, we then had our programs. Kind of one other step, we, we met with the publishers and kind of talked about prices and delivery dates and trainings and all the pieces that worked in the background. And then we kind of narrowed it down to three programs at each level. And the teachers went through a formal pilot adoption process where they used the programs and they rubric the programs and they gave feedback, student feedback, parent feedback. Ultimately, to come to a consensus building day where we looked at the programs and they got to kind of vote and voice what they liked or disliked and build a consensus of the program they want. And that led us to today, which is presenting the information to you guys and hoping to get approval to move forward with one of the programs. So that's kind of our big pilot process. As far as timelines, we set the expectations May, June of twenty twenty-two. And then we prioritize the requirements at the beginning of the year. We trained and prepped August through February, that's going through our pilots. Debriefing, October through April, and then recommendation being tonight. So that's kind of the, the overall process. So it took a long time to go through these things. And a ton of the work, can't thank her enough, was done by Lori Fury. So Lori, you're up.
Good evening. So I want to share with you the process that we collected some feedback from our teachers and from several groups of the people who are involved when we look at different books. We had an elementary adoption committee. We also had a middle school adoption committee and a high school adoption committee. And they met together on several occasions. And I collected a lot of their feedback through different forums, interviews, polls and by going to their classrooms. Reno and I visited many classrooms during the year to hear from the teachers about what they might need and what they were benefiting from the programs. Some of the quotes are seen here. We have an elementary teacher who said, "I think it was helpful to have multiple teachers at each grade level, talk about the piloting process and to bounce ideas off one another." "I also liked the time was given for everyone involved to pilot all of the programs." This gave a great perspective on each program. To give you some history, in the past, we've had pilots where a teacher will just try one program. And we found that this was a lot more beneficial and I think the teachers did too. Elementary, another elementary teacher, "All participants were actively participating and we had a clear plan for each of the days." One of our middle school teachers said, "For the parents gave input step, there should be a night offered to parents to see all three programs, back to school night, open house." "As for teachers, we should have access to all three programs from the start and given a few hours alone to discuss initial reactions." So appreciate that feedback to fine tune our process. And another middle school teacher, two things that worked really well in this pilot were in district communication and responsiveness of leadership. After we completed all of the rounds of trying the different materials that were available from the three programs that we had narrowed it down to, we sent a survey to all of our teachers who were part of the pilot. More than half responded and these are some of the responses that we received. The, the first one that you see in the upper left-hand corner, we asked teachers if they felt good about the outcome of the pilot after they had all had the conversation and decided together about reveal. And you can see that we had a very high, a hundred percent respondents agreed. And of that, even sixty, was it sixty percent, said that they strongly agreed. That question on the upper right is the amount of time we had to pilot each program in the classroom was. And you can see a hundred percent of the respondents, the teachers who piloted, said it was the right amount of time, not too much, not too little. And that's a tricky balance to get. And we had a lot of conversation about what to do with that. And I'm glad that we landed in a good spot. On the bottom left, the, the question was, "This pilot was equitable to all teachers' voices and opinions." And again, a hundred percent agreement with thirty, thirty-five point seven percent strongly agreeing, which is for my facilitator heart, that makes me very happy. And on the bottom, on the opposite side, we used a consensus process to determine which of the texts would be our top choice as a committee. And the process was effective. A hundred percent of the teachers agree with it with more than half at fifty-three point three percent saying strongly agree. So very excellent results and feedback for us as we move forward with pilots.
All right, to kind of continue, so just to go back into Ed Reports where we kind of started to get our reports. Again, they're independent of textbook publishers. And educators and different people in curriculums can be part of these committees and it's completely independent. And they rate different curriculums on focus coherence, rigor and mathematical practices and the usability for the teachers. So for the programs we piloted, we made sure all of them met this before we even started. So, so we felt confident, no matter what program was picked ultimately, that it was a highly rated program. So from that, and you probably can't read that at all, but green is good. How's that? So, so they rate all the programs and, and it's really fascinating if you actually want to go through one of the programs. And they take you through each pieces and they give you the recommendations. And if they don't like it, they'll tell you why they don't like a particular program. It's really a thorough way of, of screening and getting down to programs that are gonna be good for our students. So this right here is reveal. And you can see it's green everywhere and it meets at all levels and all locations. Pre-calculus, they don't do an Ed Report for that. So Ed Reports does science, language arts and math at different levels. They don't do the curriculums currently. So I'm gonna step aside and let Tanny talk over. Hey, no, Lori, sorry.
We're gonna attack you a few times.
So I shared with you some of the teacher feedback. We also solicited and got quite a bit of parent feedback. And we used a parent newsletter, a classroom survey that some teachers sent out from their classroom. And email feedback was collected from parents. And here are some of the things that we heard from our families. A parent of a third grader at Carl Lindsay Coppin, "Hi, I'm terrible and I didn't notice the two different programs, but I have noticed that," and then their student names there, "has been doing much better in one that you are currently working with, which was reveal. She seems to understand and retain the information, the info better and can do the homework with total to no help." An eighth grade parent. "It needs to have modeled programs, vocabulary defined, practice sets and build in skill progressively. It would be great to have a digital component as well, videos, answer keys for parents to support and include real world problems with rigor. Spiral review is also helpful. Fluency work is a bonus." All of those things are in reveal. A sixth grade parent. Great question when we were asking what they want in the book. "Aligned parental guidance on where to find math examples or how to do the math so we can help them at home with their work. It's been a long time since we've taken math courses. And a good thing, my husband did some refresher courses. We've had to Google slash YouTube videos to remind us of some of the algebra and the geometry since the math has changed since we did it. We can't always access the materials he posts through our school edg login, so we're less prepared to help her. The structure for the kids, particularly those challenged in STEM, is definitely fast and not sure she grasps everything or at least retains it from more than getting through the tasks. Honestly, with geometry one, I was the same." So it was really great. We had a lot of parents give us feedback and I'm, I'm really grateful that we got that. Really informed our committee. We gave that feedback to our committee along the way and most of them collected the feedback themselves and then shared it when we were meeting together. So it was really beneficial.
Good evening. I'm a math teacher.
Yay.
And through this process, we collected student food feedback and I'll speak for all of the teachers. We collect a student feedback daily. Their faces are sometimes all the feedback that's necessary. But officially, we also collected feedback, especially from our students that have a higher literacy skill. We took blind feedback, sent out surveys for them. We took in-class conversations. And so you have some quotes. When you get the question wrong, it shows you how to do it, so that doesn't happen again. And there's a link at the bottom of the problem that shows an example to help. That was a big wish on the students' wish list, was the ability to try again. A second grader, I, I want the second grader in my class. I like being challenged. A sixth grader, "It has problems that don't come out with wacky fractions like eighteen thirty-seven." And one of our first, our fifth graders, "The most helpful thing I learned was how to multiply decimals, God bless. And it explained best out of all three books and also had a space for visual learners." So the students really reflected on what they needed. And their voices were really heard, which was a wonderful part of this process. And as part of the process, we gather teacher feedback back all along the way. And as part of the process, we gather teacher feedback back all along the way. Um, as part of that, we met, I think we met five times, and were allowed to just collaborate with grade-level peers a little bit vertically and really talk about, well, this worked for my students. Oh, I didn't know it did that, and, and get the feedback that was necessary as we worked through the different pilots. Um, our middle school teachers reported, um, and we had many ways, we could just send an email to provide feedback, but we were also given surveys and other more formal ways. Uh, having a good workbook is, like this is very useful when students are absent, as they often are. Parents can help at home now. We consistently get requests from amazing parents who want to help, and they really like something to, to go by. Uh, this couldn't have happened with a named book that we're not recommending. Uh, elementary teacher, "I appreciated greatly the Be Curious section." I love that our elementary students were being curious, and our, um, the teacher reported that they spent, they found they spent almost too much time in this section because the kids were making so many math actions. Another elementary school teacher, "The kids said this curriculum was their favorite. Uh, they preferred this style because we didn't even crack open a book until we got to the independent practice. They preferred using whiteboards, working through the lesson without having to copy sentences, especially at the elementary level, or answer a million questions." And the kids really reported that they felt heard in this process. We know it's not good.
All right, almost to the end there. So elementary teacher poll results, so what we did is we tried to build consensus. It wasn't a true vote, like just pick. Um, past practices, if you do that and the teacher says, "No, I don't want it," then that curriculum gets picked, and I have a teacher who's not happy. So the goal here is to work together to build a consensus to pick a program, and we did that through a rating scale. So the first thing we did is you can either love the program, like complete agreement, have some reservations, but you're okay with the program moving on, or you could block it, like, "I'm not okay with this program." And right off the bat, you can see that I already got blocked by sixty percent of the teachers, which means I already was out for elementary. From there, then, both the other programs were close to be getting picked, and we went through processes where, where teachers talked about the program and what they liked about it, and maybe what they didn't like about it, and they literally worked a consensus, and this, um, took us to Reveal where eighty-seven point seven percent actually picked it at that point. So it was pretty highly picked. Everyone was okay with both programs, but this is the program they picked. So for elementary, they picked Reveal through consensus. In a kinda similar way, we did this with, uh, middle school for, um, their program, and you can see again, Ready Classroom got blocked, so Ready was out right off the bat. We were then down, um, actually, I take the back of mid-school was blocked too. So we were down to a program. And, and there you can see that eighty-three point three percent was in full agreement with sixteen percent had some reservations, and we talked with those reservations, which were honestly pretty minor, um, at that point. So again, um, middle school then had picked Reveal as well. These happened completely independently, so both programs, they never, I mean, they could've talked in the background, but on our end, they never talked to each other. So independently picked the programs, which is kinda fascinating to watch. Do you have polls anymore?
Yeah, I went for high school, I can share.
All right, you gonna pull that one up?
Yeah. It's not a round, it's, it's much more.
Okay, that's right. So then, um, for high school, um, they looked at two programs, um, much more focused group, only a couple of teachers, and, uh, they didn't like Reveal in this for the precalculus book. Um, they did however, every teacher picked, uh, the SendGage, uh, precalculus by Larson, a hundred percent picked that book. Um, and one of the big things, it really drives to the AP exams, is why they like that. So from this, um, Ed Services recommendations and teacher recommendations for elementary school would be Reveal Math, for middle school, Reveal Math, and for high school, Precalculus, SendGage Math. So questions, thoughts, comments?
I have just one question. When will, if we adopt this, when will it start for the schools? Next school year?
Tomorrow.
No. Really?
So, so.
People use their pilot material.
So, so the truth is, so once we got to this process, we obviously knew we still needed to get approval from, from the board, but we sat down and we asked the teachers, "What do they need to get this program rolling as soon as possible?" And they, they asked for, "Can we literally be trained today? And can we get the books tomorrow so we can literally start preparing for next school year?" So assuming, um, hopefully, you guys, uh, adopt it, we'll, we'll start with, um, getting the books delivered in the next two weeks so we can start the process officially.
Awesome.
With Reveal, the two Reveals, and then go into another, another publisher, is there any, any problems with their compatibility, you change the system?
So in our high school right now, we actually already have Reveal for the regular math classes, so we're probably the only district in the world, that's, that's not true, we're probably the only district around in this grid area that actually has the same curriculum, K-12. That's not usual, they usually actually have different curriculums. Um, so that's something really, it happened. Um, there could be some downsides of that, um, having different curriculums, but we're not gonna worry about that for the next eight years because we're lined up now, so.
Any other questions?
So I have a question, I'm gonna, this is for you, Scott, are we gonna set a baseline to do comparisons, um, over the next few years on, um, grades and that type of thing, whether the performance metrics, you know, do you, do you have that?
Yeah, we, we do test scores and, and grades, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we, are there gonna be any surveys, maybe after the first year, with the students or anything, to see?
Uh, we could.
How they think, how they're feeling about it?
Yeah, we could.
I mean, just that, you don't have to think about it and see if that makes sense.
Yeah, we usually purchase an eight-year adoption, so, when we do.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can do a survey up to the end, see what these between, we can do that, yeah.
I'm sure.
We can change the program because we commend ourselves pretty.
Yeah. And then we start, we start our I Heart Love campaign. I mean, I heart, I heart math.
We can do that too, yes.
Please, please. Go ahead.
How, how will you know you're successful? Can we see test scores change?
Um, yeah, we can compare it kinda against baseline in our past test scores.
What would you look for to say, "Yeah, we did the right thing, we got the right points"?
Um, I mean, it's, it's complicated, but simple, so I would wanna see growth every year, um, right off the bat.
And what would growth?
Well, five to ten percent, hopefully, we, we could start growing. It gets harder as you get more growth, right, because you're, you're tightening the population down. The one thing that's hard with any new curriculum that you choose is there's a learning curve within it, so you may not see in the first year a big jump because that's the teachers learning the process, the new system, and then you see growth from there. And I'd also say, you know, the curriculum itself is one part we gotta look at, the other part is just best teaching practices in the classroom because those go hand-in-hand with, correct, increased student achievement.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, so the question that's on the table is approval of the, this math curriculum, or adoption of this math curriculum, sorry. Motion to approve. Okay. My second. All right, this is all favor. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah. Nice presentation.
You know, I think people might think you just pulled this out of a bucket, you guys did an amazing job.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't like Carrie.
So I, I just wanna brag on, well, all, all of them, I've known Jenny for a long time, um, nine years, right? Since I, when I was in Ed Services, and Lori, um, similarly, and so I just, and I wanna point out Lori, Lori's actually noted in the math framework for the state of California because she was one of the folks selected, um, many years ago to do work at the state level to ensure that it was focused on math and best practices and strategies, and, and, um, both of these ladies are amazing. I mean, you know, you're okay too, but I appreciate that. But I wanted to, because like, you don't know Lori as well as you know Reno, and so, and Lori's one of our education specialists with obviously the focus in, in math, and has, has been in Ed Services for nine years, well, more than that, because she was there before I was, yeah.
Thank you, Carrie. And I really love the process that you guys went through, very methodical, very thorough, and it really didn't leave any questions for me because it was, included everybody. Uh, thank you. That was, that was really great. Thank you. All right. So we are on to future agenda items. Any future agenda items for anybody?
Are we gonna do the YDN presentation soon, or have to present? For everybody to see what, before we start phase two, so they can, about what we've done for phase one.
We, we can, we can do a, like a, a update?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
But we have Mike do it, Mike, Mike's exciting.
Yeah, she is. Maybe we'll get him, yeah, her and Adrian vote, yeah, but yeah.
Yep. Absolutely. All right, any, any other, anything else? Okay. Okay, so the next meeting is May sixteenth at Lincoln High School, Peter. Awesome. All right. Yeah, we are adjourned.